Under God, indivisible, live liberty and justice for all.
Sean, can you explain the Zoom rules, please?
Sure. So, our meeting tonight is in person, but as always, we also have it broadcasting through Zoom, also live on YouTube. For those on Zoom, when it's time for public comment, if you'd like to public comment, you'll want to hit the Raise My Hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you're calling via phone, so if you're on by phone, you'll hit star nine. Thank you, sir. That's it. So you hit star nine if you're on the phone.
Okay. Carol, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Here.
Councilmember Clark Kretz?
Here.
Mayor Nysley?
Here.
All right. So now it's time for us to have the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion for that? I'll make a motion.
Second.
Tonight's agenda.
Jeff, was you that seconded it?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark Kretz?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Mayor Nysley?
Yes.
Okay, now we're going to move on. We don't have any recognitions or proclamations, so there's matters of interest to council members. Does anybody have anything they would like to bring up? No?
I have to say something, and it is about Hazel that we just had that moment of silence.
Yeah, I have some more to say about Hazel.
I'm sure you do. I know you had a good chance to work with her as well. Hazel Heinlein was somebody that was super special to me, and she did a lot for our town. And as I was a young gal growing up, I watched her run for office and, you know, make some really great things happen in our town. And she was always a huge inspiration for me and actually is one of the main reasons, inspirations for me to run for town council. So, thank you, Hazel, for everything that you've done, and thank you for being such an inspiration to me and women all around. And I know your family was greatly, greatly proud of you and love you, and just thank you for your service, Hazel.
Yeah, and I'd like to ditto that. And I got a chance to work with her through the Eggplant Festival in the Chamber. And I know she spent a lot of time in the Chamber and has done a lot for this community. And I was brought to my attention by Miguel Yukovich that we possibly could dedicate the Iris Garden that's right out front here, because she was instrumental in making the Iris our town flower. So I'd like to just, I don't know how we go from there. Can we discuss that?
We'll put it on a future agenda item. You can't take action on anything like that, but we'll put it on.
Okay, thank you. And then the only other thing I have tomorrow morning at 8:00 at the Blucus is the State of the Town, and everybody's welcome, and there's no charge for that. So if you'd like to attend that, it will also be streamed live on Facebook at Rocket TV. So, and then we'll try to get a recording of it for later. So. All right. Town manager report, Sean.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, just a couple of quick ones. On Costco, as council recalls, we settled one of those three lawsuits against the project within a month of the project's approval back last year. We prevailed on the EIR challenges against the project with the other two lawsuits, but the judge found a defect in the town's interpretation of its own zoning code. And so tonight's agenda includes the first step, which is the approval to proceed with a general plan amendment to rectify that issue that was identified by the judge. And we anticipate resolution of that entire issue by July. The other thing I wanted to note is that in the meantime of that, with the legal issue getting worked out, staff's been processing the project's onsite improvement plans, which were submitted last month. So Costco's still moving forward, submitted all their plans, and we're working on that now. The Loomis Garage Building, so that's the building located at 3701, 3705 Taylor Road, so the former Mel's Chevy dealership, they continue on with the renovations. You know that, you'll note that the rolled-up A doors have now been removed. They put storefronts in. They look really nice, kind of aluminum storefronts there. They've done a lot of work on the outside to kind of bring it back to what it used to look like. So sort of keeping it historic looking, historical looking, got it all painted up. At this point, leases are secured for Pepper Jack Interiors, Valiant Coffee, and Loomis Mercantile, which is a bike shop market from the owners of A-Town Bicycles in Auburn. A lot of questions about the annual summer concert series coming up, so those are moving forward this year with a full slate of concerts. Second Friday of each month, so it'll be May 13th, starts in May. May 13th, June 10th, July 8th, and August 12th. We have three bands already set up, ready to go, and we're working on finalizing the fourth. So that'll be a good one. The Grove, which is the housing project off of Humphrey Road, they're in the process of the rough grading. Utility work's been done. They're currently doing the construction of the curb gutter and sidewalks, and they'll be doing paving of the streets by the end of March, and then they'll start the home construction on those shortly thereafter. Is that 10 units? Is that right? 22 units. And then Hidden Grove, we're still waiting for the revised application to be submitted. We deemed that application incomplete last month, and so we're waiting for that to be finalized. Last one I wanted to point out is the Loomis Ace Hardware Annex. So that's an annex building, storage facility that council approved a lease at the end of Walnut Street, at the end of the cul-de-sac there. That building's been put up now, so the building's actually built. They're continuing to finish out the completion of it, and they should have their occupancy permit in the next few weeks to alleviate some of their crowding issues with inventory that they have. That's it. I can answer questions if you have any questions.
No, I don't have any. No? No question?
See if anybody on, and the public has, public comment on that, or anybody from, on Zoom? Seeing none?
None, okay. And we, I don't see anybody from the library here or the Chamber, so we'll move on to public comment for items not on the agenda.
I'm Russ Kelly, 4250 Barton Road. I'm glad to be here tonight to see your smiling faces. I'm tired of not seeing smiling faces in Loomis. Even if people in Loomis are not happy, they almost always smile. Let's reconnect the smile in the community. March 31st, we'll be having a CARES event, community actively reconnecting event at the Loomis Memorial Hall. It's free for all participants of our community. The format is the same as the Loomis Chamber Mixer. That's kind of what it'll go like. So there'll be the food and things there to eat and that sort of thing. Okay? Event information is on website. It's R U S S K E L L E Y dash Loomis dot com. Should be easy to remember. And the event sponsors are Loomis Lion, American Legion, Post 775, and the Loomis Chamber of Commerce. We're putting on an event so we can get back to what we normally do. Artwork for our banner is, or for our flyer is with by Jack Morris, Loomis Lion. And we got a banner, Loomis Self Stories is making a banner to put in front of Memorial Hall, so we'll have something there to work with. I never do anything by myself. It's always more fun to do it with great people in Loomis. Event flowers are located outside. Please invite everybody you know. This is to get the community reconnected, back together, so that we can continue on with what we normally do. Everybody suffered. The kids have suffered. The people that have to stay in their houses have all suffered, and so we'd like to take care of that and change that a little bit. One final thought. Always surround yourself with people that like to get things done, and you'll never be disappointed. And I still didn't run out of time.
Good job.
Consider I bought the timer when I was on the council.
Russ, what time is that event?
It's 4:00 to 7:00 on March 31st.
Okay, thanks.
So, there should be a lot of information coming from the Chamber and different places. So just make sure you bring somebody to share. It's clubs for, you know, youth activities, all those kind of things. There'll be a lot of people there.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment for items not on the agenda, out in the audience? How about on Zoom?
So if you'd like to comment matters on, not on the agenda, on Zoom, you'll need to hit the Raise My Hand button at the bottom. Doesn't look like it.
Okay. So now it's opportunity to comment on consent calendar, on the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, we're going to need to pull number one, the minutes for February 8th.
All right. So there's an amended minutes that we need to?
Right. So pulling these, we would look for a motion, assuming that we have no comment on the rest of them, for a motion to approve number 2 through 9 on the consent, and then we'll come back and do number one.
Do we have anybody in the public that has a comment on the consent agenda? Is there anybody on Zoom?
Nope.
Okay. So I just need a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items 2 through 9.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark Kretz?
Yes.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Mayor Nysley?
Yes.
All right.
So number one, amended minutes. You have amended minutes before you that we've put on your, on the dice there. We just have copies in the back for folks in the audience if they wanted to take a look. The only change was modifying the format of the minutes regarding the public comment on the rate hearing and removing addresses to that.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve the amended minutes from February 8th to 2022.
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark Kretz?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Mayor Nysley?
Yes.
We'll move on to the regular agenda, and we have Loomis Costco project considering, or consideration of general plan text changes.
So I'm actually going to turn this over to, I think, Andy, Anders Haugier, contract planner for the town.
Good evening. I think Sean has already explained what has occurred, but back in August 2020, the town approved the Costco project, including environmental documents and codes and a use permit. It went to court. There were three lawsuits. One was settled, and two moved forward. Judge made a determination, and the court determined that the town committed a land use analysis error, as it did not analyze the project's inconsistency with the town's zoning code and general plan due to the proposal to construct commercial parking, driveways, and landscaping on residential land. So what we have determined is that the town made that interpretation. The judge did not agree with the town's determination. So in order to clarify the town's interpretation of our codes and ordinances, we're recommending that you adopt the general plan update and code changes. Pursuant to the municipal code, in order to do a general plan amendment, you have to come to the council and get permission to do that. So we're asking the council tonight to direct the staff to move forward with these modifications to the general plan and bring it to the Planning Commission for discussion.
All right. Do you have any questions? So we'll go to public comment. Does anybody in the audience have a comment? How about on Zoom?
We do have one. David, you're ready to go. Just need to unmute.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. So I know the wording of the general plan changes hasn't been set yet, and I don't know exactly how much of the, of the land that is currently zoned residential needs to be changed, or needs to be accounted for. But I am a little hesitant to allow commercial to just, just build as much parking as they want essentially on residential land adjacent to commercial land. Is there, do we, this all comes about when we actually discuss the actual wording, but I think we should either limit it to a certain percentage, or is there a reason that we're not just rezoning the residential to commercials, just that we don't really have to change anything else in the general plan? All right, thanks.
Who wants to answer that? Would it go?
So the discussion that David brought up really belongs at the Planning Commission when it comes to the Planning Commission. Tonight's discussion is, do you authorize the, the application and processing of a general plan amendment? So that's the only issue that you have before you tonight. We're looking, that this will go to the Planning Commission on March 22nd. So the package will be out about a week before that meeting for everybody to review and then be ready to make comments to the Commission on the 22nd.
All right, thank you. Is there any other comments? No? So we look for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution to allow Costco Wholesale to proceed with an application for general plan text changes.
A second.
Do you have to say the second part, too?
Just one clarification. This application will be a town application. It's not actually Costco's application.
Okay. So you want me to restate?
To proceed with an application for the general plan text change.
Okay, so we need to change that, Carol. Do you see, take out Costco Wholesale and say Town of Loomis? Can, you want to restate that?
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution to allow the Town of Loomis to proceed with an application for a general plan text change.
A second.
And then do we need to also include directing the Planning Commission? A second?
And in addition, we need to direct Planning Commission to review the project at its next meeting and make a recommendation to the town council.
Jeff, I'm already.
Danny seconded it? Okay, roll call, please. Councilmember Clark Kretz?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Mayor Nysley?
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll move on to Pioneer Energy Presentation.
So we have two gentlemen from the Pioneer Community Energy Joint Powers Authority. This was requested by council at the February, no, January meeting, and so we were able to get them here in March. So they have a PowerPoint. I'll start that up.
Great. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and good evening, council members. And thank you for having us tonight. It's been a while since I think Pioneer's briefed you. I think we met in 2020 regarding the expansion with El Dorado County, but we haven't really had a status of the utilities in a while. So thanks, thank you again for having us tonight. So do we have a short presentation? If we could go to slide two. Great. Thanks, Sean. And next slide, please. So just a reminder that, you know, Pioneer and Loomis, you joined our JPA in 2017, then we began serving energy in February 2018. We have a nine-member board, of which Councilmember Duncan is our vice chair, and Councilmember Clark Kretz is our alternate. And we've been the provider of choice for 90% of Loomis residences and businesses, so very proud of that. Next slide. Great, thanks. And just to kind of, we have currently about $100 million budget, of which that's going to go up significantly once we have a full year now of El Dorado County. But cash inflow, 99% of our cash inflow comes from user fees, the rates that you all pay. So just the emphasis there is that we're not subsidized in any way, shape, or form. That other 1% includes investment income and small amount of what we call congestion revenue rights, which are revenues we receive for transmission rights on the grid. The cash outflow, so 92% of our budget is power supply related. So we have very little overhead. That was by design. I don't have, except for our term loan, we don't have a large amount of liabilities on the, long-term liabilities on the balance sheet. And what I also would get out of that is that we're very nimble. We can be very, very competitive with PG&E when it's one-for-one. What's put us behind in 2021 was what we call a power charge and difference adjustment. That's corrected itself in 2022, and that should be very, very minimal over the next couple of years, is, for instance, Diablo Canyon is coming offline and other factors that are going to help us there. So when it becomes just us versus PG&E on power supply cost, we'll win every time because we don't have that overhead. Next slide, please. So just want to kind of review 2021, and Councilmember Duncan was very much a part of all these decisions in 2021, which was setting the foundation for what's going to be a very successful 2022. So that included some policies to ensure the sustainability of the utility, as well as setting a strategic plan, as well as building the infrastructure that made us operationally independent from, from the county. And all that is to get us into this year, where we'll be looking at supporting our vision statement, which is becoming that community partner, providing those reliable energy solutions, so going beyond just rates and other value plays. And this year, we can do that. So next slide, please. So just, I won't go through all the items there on the slide, but for foundation, so we set the strategic plan. We also had six new board members, so Councilmember Duncan was very helpful in guiding the new board members, because he was a legacy member. I mentioned self-reliance. So we paid off the debt to the county, became operationally independent. Financially, we set the rates in December that went effect in March 2022, so we're now 10% lower than PG&E, and Mark is going to go over that in a moment. And we also set some key financial policies, such as our reserves and such, to ensure our long-term sustainability. On programs, Mark's going to go through all, most of those lists, but, most of those items on the list, but the, we did launch a community programs advisory committee, and we also launched a Green 100 rate, which is a 100% renewable rate option for those that so choose. On grid resiliency, we have fast trips. We partnered with PG&E on mitigating PSPS events, and we also had Assembly Bill 843 that Mark will cover in more details. And then towards the middle of last year, we had to really pivot towards the expansion with El Dorado County and City of Placerville, which was a significant addition to our portfolio. Next slide, please. And just to cover some of the major initiatives in 2022, and again, I won't go through the whole list, but just the highlights. So we are going to be looking at obtaining a credit rating from Standard and Poor's or Moody's this year. I think we're going to be in, you know, excellent financial position to be able to do that. On the power supply side, with Assembly Bill 843, that a member of our staff was instrumental in getting that passed, what it does is it allows us to partake in the biomat program, which is something that we're paying for already with PG&E. This allows us to have access to those funds, and we can then look in having a small biomass plant in our service territory. Right now, we have a very hot prospect with Western, Western Placerville Waste Management Authority and having a location there. So we're very excited about that. On the program side, I mentioned about the community programs advisory committee. We launched it last year, and this year, we look to facilitate that and come up with some recommendations. On the legislative and regulatory side, I mentioned 843. We also are bringing to the board next month our legislative platform, looking at issues that will impact us all on our, on the electricity side, as well as pushing a transportation electrification bill, which when I look at the gas pump lately, that might be actually pretty timely. And then public outreach and customer care, we're looking at upgrading the website, focusing on key accounts business plan, and really that third item, focusing to improve our participation rate. We have a very good discount to PG&E. Loomis is about 90%. Overall, we're about 88. We should be better than that. So we'll be working to improve that number. And then on the administration side of it, we're also looking at several expansion opportunities. Others are liking what we're doing and want to join as well, so we'll be evaluating that as well. And with that, I'm going to hand this over to my colleague, Mark Riffey. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Next slide, please. So local energy procurement. One of the things that's great about a CCA is local control and local engagement. And we practice that every month and every day when we go out to buy contracts for power and whatnot. And these are just some of the examples of what we've done. With El Dorado Irrigation District, we signed a 10-year contract to buy the power from them, and that was prior to them joining Pioneer. But we knew we were moving in that territory, and we wanted to support the local businesses. Placerville County Water Agency, you can see we have that as well. And that last item there, Don, was talking about with the biomass project, and that came about because of the passing of 843, and then funds became available to CCAs and their customers. And so we're looking forward to taking advantage of that opportunity and supporting those businesses. About 10 to 15% of our power contracts come from local sources. On top of that, outside of power, we look to buy local. When we're doing printing, and we're doing, we just got some name tags and things of that nature, we always look local first. When we do an RFP, as an example, if price is similar, we give points to the local vendor. I mean, we can't make bad financial decisions, but if it's competitive, we will go local. Frank's not here from the Chamber, but you know, the Chamber folks should love us. That's our mantra, is shop local when we can, and we want to support a community at all times. Next slide, please. So this one is the rates, and this is the one that everybody talks about because it's our pocketbook. The dust is settling now from what I'd say was just the chaos of the last three months. We've talked about January, PG&E raised the rates for transmission distribution, and gas went 90%, 100% up, and it's still going up. And then the generation rates from PG&E and Pioneer went up in March. Luckily for Pioneer and Pioneer customers, our board set a rate policy that we were going to be at a discount to PG&E. So wherever PG&E set their rates, we were going to be discounted to that. And when we consider discounts and we consider cost comparisons, we take our generation plus the exit fee that PG&E charges, the PCIA, and we are still going to be a minimum 6%. In Placerville County, residential customers and commercials should see close to 10%, if not 10% savings on generation rates. And so that is a savings every month that's going to go on, and that is just a great opportunity for our customers to save, given the overall bills are going up significantly. And I know we've talked about that, and we've put the word out to our customers, and we actually have information on our website, trying to help customers understand their bill. Because when they get their bill, it's so drastically different than it's been. We're just trying to help provide that information. One of the things, too, that our board voted to do is we're sharing our savings. And what I mean by that is, you could always set your rates to be equal to PG&E's, right? We could say we're exactly the same price as PG&E. And our board said, no, we want to share our, we want to lower our rates to where we need to be. And we're putting in about $20 million a year are going back to our customers. They're not going to the coffers of Pioneer. They're not going to, you know, our rates. They're going back to our customers. And so those folks that are in economic development can appreciate what $20 million will do when people have those kind of dollars to reinvest in the communities they live and shop in. And so that's kind of an idea that we like to support at all times, of helping the reinvestments in everybody's local communities and their local businesses. The other item that Don mentioned earlier was our Green 100 rate. We did a customer satisfaction survey a while ago, and a lot of the residential customers said, we want to buy 100% of our energy from renewable sources. So we created a Green 100 rate. Green 100 rate, you pay 1.088 cents more per kilowatt hour. On a residential customer, that's about seven bucks a month. But that means all of your energy is 100% renewable. Commercial customers can get this. Residential customers can do this. From the commercial standpoint, it's great, because if your business has a goal or a directive to be 100% renewable, that's fantastic. The big news is, last week, the City of Auburn voted at their council meeting that all municipal facilities will be 100% green. And that goes to any kind of climate action plan or any kind of energy reduction. And that goes to any kind of climate action plan or any kind of energy reduction, GHG mandates or goals that your city or communities have. And that is something that's available to LUMIS, it's something that's available to any community that's out there. One of the things we do is we help those, we helped Auburn figure out what does that mean for them, that extra penny per kilowatt hour over the course of a year. And so we're very proud about Auburn stepping up. They're the only ones in the region that have done that, and in the region meaning Roseville doesn't do that, other cities in this area doesn't do that, even outside of our service territory. Pioneer's the only, PG&E doesn't offer 100% renewable. We're the only ones that offer this 100% renewable option in our community, in LUMIS. And so that's something, again, from our residents, we're very proud of the fact that they asked us to do it, and our board supported it, and we stepped up and did it. Next slide, please. Solar, this is everyone's favorite topic. It's been a really, really exciting topic with the whole concept of the NEM 3.0. NEM 3.0 has been delayed by the PUC. NEM 3.0 is basically a continuing shift of, in the eyes of PG&E and CPUC for fairness of costs. That can be debated all day long, and that's not what I'm here to do with you all, but they have a new CPUC president and a second new CPUC board member. As such, they've shelved this for the indefinite future. However, it's going to come back up again, and it's going to have a, the way it was proposed, there was going to be an impact on the cost-effectiveness of solar for you and me as homeowners to buy it or businesses to buy it. We don't know where it's going to go, and so we're just monitoring that situation and watching it. We'll be reporting it out as we become aware of it. We share information with our boards, so they can share it with their councils and their board supervisors and get the information out. That's a big wait and see, but it is a big wait and see. Pioneer has over 30,000 residential customers that are solar, and so a lot of times, people call us up and say, well, I opted out of it because Pioneer doesn't do solar, and that's just not true. Unfortunately, some of the information that's out there says that we don't do solar. And there's a reason behind that, and we'll get into it in a minute. The third bullet there is Pioneer pays a half cent more than PG&E for any overproduction. So if you have a system that's overproducing, PG&E pays whatever they pay, and as that moves up and down, so does ours, and we're always a half a cent above that. So any overproduction, you actually get paid more from Pioneer than PG&E.
Mark, just a second. NE, can you explain to people what that stands for?
Oh, NE, NEM, that's net energy metering. And so the concept behind this is that meter is going to go back and forth. And so when you have solar and you're producing energy on your rooftop, you consume that first. And then if there's a gap, you buy that from the utility, and they deliver that to your house, and the meter spins, and you pay for whatever you consume from the utility. But there's always times, well, not always, there's times of the day where you're producing more than you're consuming, and that energy flows back to the grid, and then you get this credit. And so that leads to your fourth bullet there, thank you, Jeff, sorry. I always get the nomenclature, and I forget that nobody's got that. So the fourth bullet there is about the tru-ups. And what that means is Pioneer trues up every month, PG&E does it at the end of the year. So if you're a PG&E solar customer, you're going to pay $10 a month or whatever that fee ends up being that they charge you, and whatever you owe or whatever credit you get just gets, the can gets kicked down the road. And on your tru-up date, which is 12 months later, you get a bill. I got my tru-up bill, and it was kind of shocking, unfortunately, I hate to admit it, but you get that bill, you get that credit at that time. With Pioneer, every month, you get tru-up, as we call it, and that's, you get a credit on your next month's bill for X amount of dollars, or you owe a certain amount of monies. And so that's the big difference between the two philosophies. And one of the things that Pioneer does is we do a NEM analysis for our customers all the time. It's what's right for me. And one of, our goal is to provide customers with that information, and you make the decision that's right for you, because really, you might say, oh, there's four months a year I got to pay 200 bucks. At the end of the year, I could get zero, or I can pay 400 bucks and I get credit throughout the year. For you, or me, or somebody else, that may not be a big deal, but for that one customer, it may be a big deal. So we just provide that information to the customers. And there's many times we tell customers, it might be in your financial interest to stay with PG&E and get your annual tru-up. If that's what's best for you, we're not going to direct you to a bad decision, because that's not what we're about. So anytime a customer wants that analysis, they can certainly give us a call, and we're happy to help them get the information they need to make that decision. Next slide, please. So time-of-use rates, this is the new, the next hot and heavy topic that we've been following and getting the word out. So time-of-use rates, for those that don't know, is you pay a different amount for the energy you use based on the time of day. The big one is between 4:00 and 9:00 PM, you pay a premium for energy, any energy you use. The idea behind this is it motivates you and me as consumers to use energy at the other times of day, where it's cheaper during the day, there's more solar, excess solar on the grid, so it doesn't cost as much for a utility to go out and buy power. And so as a, it keeps a downward pressure on your rates, is what the intention is there behind that. Unfortunately, as time-of-use was coming up, there were studies being done, and those of us that live up here in the foothills or higher up even, like I do, 70% of us are going to pay more, and that's just, that's fact, done by a third party that did this study for more than, more than just us. As a result, the Pioneer Board voted to not move customers to time-of-use rates for the generation component of the bill. And so PG&E said, that's great, but we're still doing it for the transmission and distribution, which are the two components to your bill. And so come April 1st, all customers, all residential customers are being moved to time-of-use rate unless you take action and you call PG&E, or you go online and PG&E, and you elect to stay in what's called the E1, your standard flat rate. All of us should have got a mailer, I remember I got mine, in which they gave you the three options with the price that you personally would pay, depending upon which rate you picked. If you don't, if you did not get that, or you're not sure you got that, you can go onto the PG&E website or call PG&E, and they will then walk you through that and help you get that information. This is very important because you're going to be forced into this time-of-use rate, and I know Jenny and I talked at more than one meeting about this, and we're trying to get the word out. It's very important because you're going to get that bill after all these other rate increases, there's going to be another kickup, and you're going to go, what the heck's going on? So please take the time, tell your constituents, take the time and get the information. If they don't know who to call, call us, and we'll get them the phone number. We can't do that analysis for them because it is PG&E's, but we can certainly give them the number, the website, whatever it is that they need to get to that right site. It's very important. On that, that last bullet there, which is kind of covered, but it's okay, you know, we're hosting a webinar on March 15th coming up, and that webinar is going to have the manager from PG&E that runs the time-of-use for the region, and they're going to give a workshop and explain to residents what that means for us. Our website, pioneercommunityenergy.ca.gov, you go there, you can find the webinar, it's a Zoom one, you don't have to sign up, there's no register, you just click on the Zoom meeting and you attend it. I'm going to be sending that out to our board, Jeff, and I know Jenny asked for it as well, and it's going to have the link to that. I'd like you guys to put that out on your websites or your pages, Facebook, we're going to do social media, we're going to get it all out there, the city's page, everything. It's just get the word out to as many people as we can. They can come to it, they can hear directly from PG&E what that means and how we go about getting out of it if we want to get out of it, but also they can ask their questions, whatever their questions are, and we really want people to come to do this. And again, this is just another example of Pioneer being a member of the community where even if they're not a Pioneer customer, I want them to come to this webinar and get this information, and that's, because at the end of the day, that's what it's about. So next slide. This is probably my favorite component of what we do at Pioneer, and that's community engagement, community advocacy. We're out and about on a regular basis, establishing, enhancing our relationship with our customers, and if it's important to our customers, it's important to us. And so with that, one of the things we're doing in 2022 here is that renewed customer outreach, and what we're talking about that is, you know, we just want to reintroduce ourselves to customers and let them know who we are. Full disclosure, I've been with Pioneer now for a whopping five, six months. I've been in the utility business 23 years, but it's about getting back out to our customers and making sure they know we're a part of this community. You know, we go to a lot of events, and you can see there, like down on the last bullet, the second bullet there, Eggplant Festival. We've been to it many years, we're going to come to it again, we're really excited that, you know, that's out and about. Eldorado County Fair, got canceled, it's coming back this year, we're going to be there. We're going to be at all these community events, I come to the Chamber stuff. We try to be out and about with residents and businesses to hear what's going on so we can then help them with their answers to their questions. Our goal, my goal, is to be the go-to resource for utilities. If any of you have gone to the PG&E website or tried to call them, you can get your information, but it's very challenging. Don mentioned, we're not revising our website, we're throwing it away and we're starting over again. It's going to be a tool that's available for all customers, PG&E or Pioneer, to get information about things that we've been talking about tonight and other stuff. And so that's our goal. The Community Programs Advisory Committee, that's something, again, that came out from direction from our board, is that we're developing a portfolio of programs, and we want to hear from the public. So we have 11 members, six from Placer County, all over Placer County, and five from Eldorado County, and we've been meeting about once a month, and we're going to present to the board a report that says, here's a litany of programs that we'd like to offer, electric vehicle, energy efficiency, fuel switching, whatever, whatever it's going to go, and we'll see what we can do with that. It's a very exciting group because, quite frankly, don't know what the finished product's going to look like, because you've got 11 members of the public, and they've all got different ideas, and they're all talking to folks in their neighborhoods and whatnot. But, next slide, please. And so this is where we go out and the advocacy in action, where we get out there and we speak on behalf and fight for our customers. The top one there, the AB 843, and that's the biomass. There was funding available, but it wasn't available to the CCAs, it was only available to the IOUs. And so as Don mentioned, you know, we got a bill passed that said those funds are now available to CCAs and their customers, which then opens the door for opportunities for these smaller biomass facilities. You know, we've talked to some folks in Eldorado about putting some up in the foothills, or up, you know, up in the foothills here, higher up even, where you're not driving down to Lincoln and whatnot with your trees, and you're losing whatever your environmental benefits are with all the diesel that you're pumping out on their transportation. The next thing there, the River Fire Bill Credits, that's something that, after the fires up in Colfax, our board elected to waive two months of energy bills. They just said, we're not going to collect on these bills, these people lost homes, they don't need to worry about a silly electric bill. So I congratulate our board for stepping up and doing that, and so we're very proud of that. The next two thing there, we've all heard about the PSPSs, which are the shut-offs that unfortunately happened, happened not so much last year as the two years prior to that, and that's because the PUC clamped down on PG&E on those. I can tell you that with PSPSs, one of the things that Pioneer did that, you know, was a benefit is up north of Colfax, there was a line. One of the things that happens with PSPSs is they have to report, PG&E has to report those, and they track them, there's a website and all this information's out there. And we were noticing this one particular line was always being shut off. But then when you went to the PG&E website, that site, that location was not on their list of things to be improved. So Pioneer staff contacted PG&E and contacted the PUC and said, what the heck's going on? And why can't this area, if this area is shut off on every PSPS, it needs to be addressed? Well, I can tell you in 2021, that line did not have a PSPS event. I know probably some work was done on it, and other were factors that it was brought to their attention, that they always picked on the same section. The fourth bullet, their fast trips, fast trips was what I call the PSPS by another name. The reason APSS came out is they didn't have to report to us at the PUC, they didn't have to track them, they weren't held to the same standards as the PSPSs were. And what they do there is they lower the sensitivity of equipment, so they trip off a lot faster. In October, we were up in Georgetown, 12 people were there. It was a really, there was two of us and 12 residents. Three-fourths of them talked about unknown outages, PG&E couldn't explain it to them, and they didn't know what was going on. And we said, hey, great, we'll look into it. Now, mind you, we're not serving them right, we're, we're just up there educating them. And so we start making some phone calls, and the people at PG&E couldn't even explain it. We learned what it was, and we ended up contacting the PUC and bringing it to their attention, and the state's CCA committee about that. And we raised such an issue of it that President Batchor, who was the past president for the PUC, chastised PG&E a couple times in a letter and in a public speech. And in one of those letters, she referenced the treatment of Eldorado County residents as unacceptable, and she actually used a quote from our letter to her, in her letter to the PG&E management. And so that's where we speak up on behalf of our, of our residents and our customers, and that's what we want to be. The last one there is just an example of how we partner with the, with the community, the biomass, Placer Air Quality Management District, I believe you're on the board, right, Jeff, or you were?
Air Pollution.
Air Pollution Board, right. I call it air quality, I'm sorry, it's air pollution. So they called us and said, can you guys join our working group and come up and help us facilitate development of projects in Placer County for biomass? And so we're very proud of the fact that we were asked to participate in that, and we are. In fact, again, as Don has said, one of our employees helped get the biomass bill passed, and we're very excited because I know Eric White and those folks over there have some great ideas, and hopefully in Placer County, we see some results. And I believe, next slide is the end of the presentation. And so with that, I'll pass it back to the mayor, and if you all have any questions for myself or Don, we're happy to help answer those.
Thank you, that's very interesting. Do you have?
Well, I just want to say, well, a couple of things. Where did you work before coming to Pioneer?
So for 16 years, I was at Roseville Electric Utility, and then seven years prior to that, I was with an IOU, Southern California Gas Company out of Los Angeles, so. But that was the gas side, that's the other side of the fence, that's the bad side.
And what, what drew you to Pioneer was the local, because you're, you know, you lived here for a long time and
Right.
the local control, or I don't want to say control, but we can act on certain things that PG&E would not even blink an eye at?
Right. So I always tell people, I've now worked at all, or three of the four, the only one I haven't done is a co-op yet, but, you know, you're investor-owned utilities, thousands of employees. Roseville Electric, excellent utility, a Department of City Government, a lot of limitations. Pioneer, I live in Placer County, up outside of Auburn, I've lived there since 2005. Nothing brings me greater joy than living and working in the community that I serve. And so when I'm out helping customers, it's my neighbors, it's the places I shop. I can tell you, my wife loves a few of the businesses here in town, and we're down here on a regular basis, so.
There was something else that we were involved in, in having actual legislation written, and that was in regards to, I know I'll get the details wrong, but Rockland Mobile Home Park that wasn't passing the savings down to their, what do you call that when you have?
Right. So that was prior to my existence, but I do know the story, and that is back in, a while back, there was a master meter, and the owner of the mobile home park was a Pioneer customer. And instead of passing on the Pioneer savings to the tenants, he pocketed those and charged the customers the full rate. And turns out, there was a loophole in the law. And so CalCCA, which is state CCA, with great influence from Pioneer, got that loophole closed, because our mobile home customers can use the savings.
Right.
And so that was a few years back, I don't know the exact timeframe of it, but pre-Mark.
Yeah, that was important. But one of the other things that really got me excited about Pioneer, along with Placer County Air Pollution Control District, was this biomass programs. And the thing about it was, people would always tell me, oh, it's so expensive, which it is, it's the most expensive green energy, but we have a problem in the mountains with dead trees and dying trees and diseased trees, and if you can turn that into energy, even a small amount, you know, it's beneficial. And now with possibility of having federal funding coming into play, that's, that's going to be a huge help to local economic development, you know, in our county, Placer County and Eldorado County now as well. So I'm looking forward to seeing more of that happen, and hopefully more economic development in this area as well. So thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Jeff.
No, Jan?
Sure. Thank you very much, that was very, very, very interesting. And I just want to say, as a customer, you've always been very, very helpful to try to understand. For the citizens, I would encourage them to call your office to try to understand their bill, because it certainly is, is pretty complicated, and you take the time to explain it, and it's really hard to get through to PG&E at all. Also, I know my sister lives in Garden Valley, and I want to thank you for your work for the people up there, because she's, she had to get a big generator, because they're, they're constantly having power outages even now. So thank you for your work, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Great, I'll look forward to you sending that information, I'll share on my Facebook.
We'll definitely get that out, probably tomorrow, too, to you and Jeff, and then Sean.
And I'll send it to
Well, and Sean for sure, definitely, we got a Sean.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
We need to open it up for public comment.
Anybody in the audience have a comment? And how about Zoom?
Doesn't look like we have anybody on Zoom for public comment.
All right. All right. And we'll go to item 12, Amendment to Town Manager's Employment Agreement.
I will make the report on this one. So the staff report indicates the council had a mid-year review with Sean last month, I believe, and directed that this item be brought forward. Just so folks know, under the Brown Act, any change in compensation for executives has to be on regular, on a regular meeting, and there has to be an oral summary of the changes in compensation. So I will proceed to provide that oral summary. Basically, the changes that are before you include removing a provision in the agreement that provides the town manager with a cost of living increase, that is provided to other management employees. Going forward, changes in compensation would require a separate affirmative action by the town council. There is no change in overall compensation in his salary at this time. There's also a provision that replaces, replaces a provision that was out of date, that was a moving expense provision, with a section that provides a $3,000 annual appropriation that Mr. Rebay can use for technology or other expenses agreed to by the mayor and Mr. Rebay. And finally, a new provision which requires the town manager to adhere to the standards of conduct and ethical principles set forth in the ICMA Code of Ethics, which is attached as an exhibit to the amended and restated agreement, and prohibits town council or its members from giving Mr. Rebay any order, direction, or request that would require him to violate that Code of Ethics. Those are the provisions that are changed, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, if there are any from council.
All right, so public comment. Anybody in the audience? Anybody on Zoom?
We have one. Pam, you're ready to go, just need to unmute yourself.
Hello, can Jeffrey go into a little bit more details on what can be spent with that $3,000? Is that like him buying a new laptop every year, or? I'd just like a little bit more details on what that, what you can get for him for the $3,000.
I think a laptop would be an example of the type of thing that would be covered. The language is fairly broad to allow the manager and the mayor to converse about what is an appropriate expenditure in this category. And Sean, I don't know, or mayor, if you want to add anything to that.
Generally, just something related to technology, so a new laptop, maybe a new phone, depending on year of the laptop, additional training that's not in the training budget. Yeah.
Alrighty, well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Pam. Is anybody else?
Hello.
All right, so now we just need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution 22, is it number, it's just 22-dash, I guess we have to wait.
It doesn't have a number yet.
Okay. Approving an amendment and restated employment agreement with the town manager.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call. Councilmember Clark Cretz?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Mayor Nysley?
Yes.
All right. Down to council committee reports. I'll start over here, Jan? No?
No, my meeting was canceled, so nothing.
Okay.
I had one done for me.
Okay. Mine, and mine's Thursday, so I don't have anything to report either. So with that, what do we do here? Oh, adjourned.
Such authority.
Well, I've got two, I don't even know why.
You could have done a drum roll.
Very quiet night.
I know, I was.